Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting for the Town of Garner, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I usually like to start out by saying, isn't it a beautiful day in Garner? And it certainly was today. Tomorrow, ask me again tomorrow. We'll talk a little bit later about some things going on related to the weather. But let's be officially correct and call the roll.
Okay. Mayor Gupton?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Matthews. And Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we'll start as usual with the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Kathy Behringer to lead us in that.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you join me in the invocation? Father God, we come humbly before you this evening, seeking your wisdom and guidance, as we work to address the issues and concerns and responsibilities for our town. We ask for your mercy and grace as this winter storm reaches Garner and our state, and we pray for minimal damage to homes, businesses, roadways, and for protection for those who work so hard to keep us safe. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman. Before we jump into the petitions and comments, I do want to make a comment or two about the weather. I want to start by quoting one of my favorite authors, Mark Twain. He said, "It's like the weather. Everybody talks about it, nobody does anything about it." But at Town of Garner, we're doing something about it. We're going to take some precautionary measures. We're going to close town facilities tomorrow. You'll get more details later. But that doesn't mean that all the employees get the day off. I want you to always remember that our number one job in municipal government and at the Town of Garner is public safety. Our firemen, our policemen, our public works will all be working tomorrow. The only difference is, it's going to be under a little more dangerous situation than what they usually do. So we thank them. We thank our administrative folks and all the folks who are working remotely. As our town manager pointed out in an earlier discussion, the only good thing she could think of that came out of COVID and the pandemic was we learned how to work remotely and were set up for it. So that's the sunshine part. So most of our folks will be working tomorrow. Just because the facilities are not open, don't think your employees are not on the job. Get some more details on that later. And let's move along to petitions and comments. And I'll ask our town clerk, our town attorney first, has anyone signed up to speak?
No one has signed up for petitions and comments this evening.
No one signed up for petitions and comments. Then we don't have to read the disclosure then. We'll move right along. We'll move to the adoption of the agenda. I think our council members have had a chance to look over the agenda this evening. A lot of these things are things we've heard before, heard about. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Matthews and second by Ms. Behringer, all in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, the agenda is adopted unanimously. And here's one of my favorite parts, a presentation. And it's one of my favorite engineers, and it has to do with Engineers Week. Leah Harrison, our engineering director, if you would join me, please, at the presentation podium. This is the proclamation. Whereas engineers use their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in a creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs, and whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disaster, cleaning up the environment, and assuring safe, clean, and efficient sources of energy, to designing information systems that will speed our country into the future, and whereas engineers are encouraging our youth, math and science students, to realize the practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we will look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the twenty-first century. Now, therefore, I, Buddy Gupton, mayor of the Town of Garner, do hereby proclaim the week of February sixteenth through twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, as Engineers Week in the Town of Garner, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to recognize the contributions engineers make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And with that, our Director of Engineering, please have a few comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just a couple of things. Some background information, the National Society of Professional Engineers initiated National Engineers Week in nineteen fifty-one to highlight the important roles engineers play in our society, and it has been celebrated every year since. The two thousand and twenty-five Engineers Week theme is Design Your Future, and it's intended to be both a call to action and a celebration of the limitless possibilities in engineering. It invites us to dream boldly, innovate relentlessly, and create a future shaped by our collective ingenuity. Engineers in general are not spotlight people, and I will say, my engineering team here at the Town of Garner is no exception. They are not the ones looking for the recognition, but they're certainly a group that deserves it. And so that's why this is important to me, is to recognize everything that they do every day, having their invisible hands in all of our capital projects, our stormwater regulations, our development process, our inspections, and many other things. And so I'm very appreciative of the work that they do, and I'm very appreciative of the support that we have from management and council and you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you for your recognition. Thank you.
That's great. That's great. And now let's see if we have any comment from council members. Let's start everyone closest to me with Mr. Matthews. Comments or observations?
Well, a little bit of both, Mr. Mayor, that we certainly do appreciate what they do and keep us out of trouble from time to time, because everybody calling wants got questions on when's this going to be ready and when's it going to be ready, and we go right over there. And you guys keep us posted. And I certainly appreciate the updates in the back of the book of our meetings, of the status of projects. Great job. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, Leah, and your department, your crew helps us keep things straight. And I saw the engineers and consultants that are working on projects like the park and the building and then the so forth that helped design that. And, you know, it's not just, there's so many degrees that engineers touch. It's not just designing a roadway. You can be designing it HVAC system, public, I mean, public utilities, et cetera, et cetera, parks, greenways, stormwater. There's a lot more involved. I mean, there's little boys, I think, when people say they were engineer, they think they drove a train. But anyways, thank you for all the work that you and your department do.
I just appreciate the work that you do. I know you're the go-to person or your department when we have a question or don't know what we're thinking or talking about. And I know it from a personal point of view, too, because two of my sons are engineers. And so when I don't know which, what day it is and what I'm doing, I call one of them and they they make it straight for me. So thank you for everything that you all do and how you support us and keep us on the right track.
Thank you, Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah, just we're lucky to have you, the engineer team. And I know you hate the spotlight, but I like that whenever you're in the spotlight, you're highlighting safety, you're looking ahead on stormwater and other issues like that. So continue to do that. We need to hear it over and over again. But thank you so much for all you do and keep doing it.
Yes, appreciate all that you do, all the work that you have been doing in the past. And with the new team you have, with the with the project managers who are on point, making sure everything is flowing like they should, and adjusting to our ever-growing town, the work that you all have done is really appreciated.
Thank you. And no proclamation is complete without a photo opportunity. Have you got another engineering staff members who can join us for the proclamation photo op?
I may be able to force Lisa to join us.
Make them come up here.
She's not regretting her attendance. Okay.
And if you haven't met her yet, this is our senior engineering project manager, Lisa Rodriguez. So she's behind a lot of the big projects that you see and hear about.
You're perfect and.
Mr. Mayor, you did such a good job there. And on that other announcement, you know, since our retreat work session is going to be changed, we probably not want to mention that also for those that are watching that might be planning on coming tomorrow.
Let's get that out as a headline, and we'll get more details on it. But the planning retreat for the board, which was scheduled for this Thursday and Friday, has been postponed. I know some of you were planning to be there. Don't come. We'll send you another notice about when it is, probably the same day as the following week, just a hint. But we'll get the official word from our town manager in just a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, film at eleven. And let's move along to the consent agenda. These tonight are three items that have been looked over by staff and council members. And if there's no reason to pull any of these out for further discussion tonight, we would be asking for a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any reason to pull any of these items out for further discussion?
Some moves to adopt the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, move by Mr. Singleton and second by Mr. Vance. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move along to public hearings. And it is my duty to remind you that tonight's public hearings are legislative hearings, which do not require sworn testimony. However, persons interested in speaking must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a brief presentation, followed by the applicant and other persons who wish to comment on the item will be recognized to speak. Council requested groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. And the first item on the public hearings involves the voluntary satellite annexation of Circle K, two oh seven oh one, US seventy east, something we've rezoned and listened to before. And we'll start out by having the presentation from our planning director, live and in person, Mr. Jeff Treisenberg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Yes, I have two brief public hearings for you tonight related to annexation. And the first one here is the new Circle K site here on the northwest corner of US Highway seventy and Guy Road. It is adjacent to some existing town limits, which are also satellite areas. So this will be enlarging the satellite area by a little bit, by three point five three acres. So that again, that is all that I have for you. It is being requested because they are, they are hooking onto and have hooked onto municipal public water and sewer. So with that, I would invite you to conduct the hearing. And then we have an ordinance for you for possible adoption.
Thank you. Is the applicant here to make any presentation? Okay. And I'll check with our town attorney to see if anyone has signed up to speak at this public hearing.
No one has signed up for this public hearing.
Okay. We're moving right along then. We will get some discussion or questions from council members, and we'll start with Mr. Vance down at this end to see if you have any questions about this particular issue.
No questions.
Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews? As I told you before, we've been through this one a couple of times, haven't we, Jeff?
Yes, we have.
And this is another step in the process to approve annexation. There's no further questions. I will ask for a motion and a second to adopt ordinance two oh two five five three zero six.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Vance, a second by Mr. Matthews. With unless there's some further discussion, we'll call for a voice vote here. All in favor of approving this ordinance, this annexation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, this ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Treisenberg. And while you're up there, why don't you tell us about the voluntary satellite annexation related to Burnett Crossing?
Yes. Again, this is an annexation case twenty-four oh twenty-one, very similar to the last one in that it is adjacent to existing town limits, but those town limits are satellite areas at the current time. So this would be enlarging an existing satellite area directly adjacent on the east side of the Auburn Village development. You have Springfield Baptist Church down here on the map. So this is a composite of, I think, one zoning and maybe two site plan processes. You have an apartment complex section and then a town home subdivision on the remainder of the property. And they are nearing or have just begun construction work on these. We're getting ready to potentially approve the subdivision plans or the plats, the final plats for the town homes in the near future. So again, this is at forty-one-hundred Auburn Knightdale Road. We're looking at just over forty-five acres. Again, water and sewer is being extended throughout the site and to adjacent properties for potential future development. And again, they have submitted this petition. And again, we have an annexation ordinance for you to adopt should you decide to approve.
Okay, thank you very much. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Okay, thank you. As we mentioned before, council has seen this project a couple of times. Planning Commission has seen it. The zoning has been approved. This is another step in completing the annexation to make them part of the Town of Garner. I'll ask our town attorney, has anyone signed up to speak on this one?
I believe Greg Kerstein, Kerstein?
Yes, sir. Please, if you would have come to the podium and give us your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes of our undivided attention.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Greg Kerstein. I live in Auburn Village, so Burnett Crossing is going right next door. And we've been there for four and a half years. Legally, I think that makes us, you know, an adjoining development. Obviously, the concern, and I do not speak on behalf of the village, I speak on behalf of my wife and I, but the concern is property values. Those homes now, we've all been there four to five years, they're worth three hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand dollars. And I think we're most scared of misinformation. So I was hopeful that someone from the company would be here to tell us what all is going in, how many single-family homes, how many townhomes, how many condos, how many apartments, garage parking, driveway parking, street parking. And there are two connections, Olive Vine and English Violet, where the roads are going to connect through our development. We know that was coming. The concern is obviously traffic. We're an over fifty-five community. There's a lot of people on canes and walkers. I'll be there shortly. And we already have a bit of a speed issue on Auburn Knightdale Road. So I'm looking as one person who lives there and who has moved to Garner, for any detail we can get about this development that'll tell us the total number of units. We're used to dump trucks out that way, and it looks like we're going to be used to them again. We're also concerned about school bus traffic and whether any commercial development is coming as part of what I call the Rock Quarry seventy Auburn Knightdale triangle. So if any of you can shed any light on that, I thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you. And while you're standing up there, in case we have a little dialogue here, I certainly understand your concerns. You stated them well. I wish you could have been here at some of the earlier rezoning hearings. There was a lot of detail at a public hearing. I know the planning commission took some public testimony on this and went through it with the fine tooth comb as well. And we want to address your concerns. It, since this is kind of almost the last step, this annexation thing, it probably is moving ahead. But we do want to address your concerns. And I think you'll be satisfied on all counts, not just how these dwellings over here will be acceptable and above average, how the commercial property development up on Rock Quarry Road will add into that. This will actually be, the site we're talking about here will actually be a little bit of a buffer zone for you between that and the commercial. But they might let you walk on their walking paths over to the coffee shop at the commercial place. So there could be something in this for you.
Yeah.
And maybe the best way to get the full details is to make an appointment to see Mr. Treisenberg or one of his staff. And they love maps and they love elevations, and they would be glad to give you a picture of what's going on there and what else is planned in your, in your area out there.
And I appreciate that. My delinquency in being here broke my elbow December thirteenth. My wife had her knee replaced January ninth. We're like a mass unit. So. So I apologize for that and I'd be glad, I don't want to waste everyone's time, I'd be glad to take it up with the director.
Thank you. Your concerns are well founded, I think they've been addressed. And if you're not satisfied talking to Mr. Treisenberg, call me and I'll tell you what he said goes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Was anyone else signed up to speak?
No, the only other two people are representatives of the applicant.
Okay, just okay. Well, let's let's check with our council members here. Let's start with Mr. Matthews this time to see if there's any questions or observations you'd like to make.
No, sir.
Mr. Singleton?
No, sir.
Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dellinger?
Just a comment before we vote, and I'll be voting no, yes far in the process, but I'm going to vote no because the proximity to 540 and the failure to comprehensively plan and rezone for development despite broader site control invites patchwork development that creates lower revenue generating projects and disjointed infrastructure development. And we need to encourage a more comprehensive approach to development. I think we see this in the infrastructure development that happens in in doing these pieces by piece, we're not getting a big picture on how we're going to develop this entire area and improve the roads and the infrastructure and the traffic issues, what a commercial is and is not coming in. I think when we look around the triangle, what we're seeing is larger scale developments at these interchanges with 540 and better planned communities. And if we continue to encourage these patchwork small projects, the thing that jumped out was plaats for townhomes. This was developed as a larger community, I don't know that we'd be here in plaats for townhomes. We might, but without being fully sure what else is going here, we don't need to be encouraging and seeing these types of properties into the town. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Vance?
No comment.
Okay, thank you. Those were good insightful thoughtful comments, Mr. Dellinger, and I have to emphasize that those are very important and legitimate. One consolation in this process that I've learned is that there's a large amount of acreage right adjacent and in that vicinity that's owned by the same landowner and they do have a bigger vision. Now, we need to pay particular attention to everyone that you speak of as we go. The odd part about this too, just for everybody else's information, right across Rock Quarry Road that you see there, suddenly that's Riley's zoning position, territory. We don't have much control over that. But we do need to be cognizant, all of us, all the time, as I think Mr. Dellinger's pointing out. We need a comprehensive plan, they need to be above average, things that elevate the community and help with the revenue prospects of the town as well. Is there something else you wanted to add?
Yeah, just because it might have preceded you when this came before us, but I remember vividly during that hearing, really encouraging us not to approve the project they had and come back when they had, do that commercial rezoning at the same time. Because there are no guarantees when we approve a residential rezoner, they're not going to go out and do something different. So it works to our advantage to have a full plan all at once, even if it's going to take a longer period of time, we have a better insight as a town as to what that development pattern is going to look like. So we're on the same page as you in the time monitor.
Thank you. Very insightful. Other questions or comments by council members?
No.
In that case then, let's take a roll call vote on this one, since I think there may be some differences of opinion. And let's vote aye or nay and let's go one at a time and I'll start with Mr. Vance.
We need a motion first?
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Vance. Good thing you're the mayor pro tem on the job. Let's get a motion before us.
My move that ordinance 20255307 be approved.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second to be approved here. A motion by Mr. Vance, second by Mr. Matthews. Now, is there any other discussion or comments that any council members would like to make? That being said then, we will move ahead with a roll call vote and even more reason to start with Mr. Vance who made the motion, if you would vote aye or nay and I as I call each one of you.
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger?
Nay.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
No.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Okay, this ordinance seems to pass three to two. We'll move on to the next case. And we come to item number three on the public hearings and this is a little different. Mr. Treisenberg, you're welcome to stay around and do and do the presentation, you're going to take your opportunity to get out of there. Okay. This is a little different. This is something we don't see every day. It has to do with bonds. Our finance director, David Beck, was unable to be here, but I believe he sent Mr. Tyler Harmon to give us a little overview of what this is about. And then we may discuss it, recap it a little bit. But this is important and tell us what you can about this, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Yeah, so I'm here to present, to kind of bring together the public hearing for the two thirds GO bonds. These are additional bonds that the town can issue to kind of supplement the already voter approved GO bonds that were passed in previous years. So there is no additional debt or new debt that would be added to this, it is still in line with the current debt model. This just kind of supplements the GO bonds to save 1.935 million of those GO bonds that could be used in the third issuance if council deems necessary.
Thank you very much. Has anyone signed up to speak on this?
Yes, Rex Whaley.
Okay, Mr. Whaley, if you would please come to the podium, introduce yourself, name and address and we'll be glad to hear your input on this as well.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Appreciate the time to talk on this issue and I'll be brief. And I've only got three points I'd like to make and I know this is going to go through and I just wanted to point out a few things about the two third bonds and maybe in the future how we move forward. One, I guess, as a resident, sort of a concern I had with this is the timing is, I feel like we knew a year or two ago that we were going to have this principal paid off and yet we had this bond sale planned for March and we come in here at the last minute and rush this through. I wish there had been more time to discuss this and talk about what it's going to be used for and why we want to encourage this additional liability on the savings plan, the debt model. I know we've changed the name of it. Now, so it doesn't allow much time for residents to provide some feedback and comment because here we are tonight, we're going to vote on it. And I had spoke briefly with the town attorney before the meeting. One provision with the two third bonds, there's a provision that allows residents, if, you know, they are concerned about it, to allow for, to get a petition and require a vote. And not that I was considering pursuing that with this, it's more of a process. So I think the clock started ticking on that 30 days back on the fourth, because it says when the bond order is introduced. And here we are planning to sell in March. So you don't really, you know, residents really couldn't organize regardless that they they didn't have time for an input, they wouldn't have time to organize if they wanted to pursue that. So I know there was talk about maybe doing this again in 27, maybe allow more time and like I said, give this some thought. So that was part one, the first issue. The second is the use. You know, we're going to do these two third bonds and we're going to use it for parks and streets and, you know, there was already in the $69 million bond, 35 million, I think for parks and 24 million for streets. And we're just doing, you know, parks and streets again. So my concern, big concern with this is, you know, is this a wise use of this debt money that we have available? Were there other things that we could have applied this money to that would get a better return to the town? And again, this all goes back to the public input, you know, being limited because we, you know, we ask our developers to do more, to bring us special better projects and all. The town is also a developer. When we have these monies available, we're developing like parks or streets or whatever. So I think we should expect more from our council, our town, when we're going to invest these monies, what return are we getting? So we've already got, like I said, 69 million in parks and in streets. So we've got this 2 million now and we're going to put it in parks and streets. And so maybe there was a better use for this money if we're going to go this route, you know, like I said, to get a better return because this money is already, taxes have already been paid by the residents. And so maybe we need to look at how we're going to use this money. And the third item would be long range planning and it ties into like, what's the use, you know, this money is coming, is going to be paid for from the old revenue savings plan, debt service fund that we have now. And over the years, we seem to tinker with this this pot of money. By my count, you know, we've paid tax increases and paid taxes to fund this project and last year we went to a straight up eight and a half cent, I think it was, debt to fund this debt model, this debt fund. But over the years, and the thinking was that we would build up money that we could do things in the town without having to go to the residents and get a tax increase. But we've used this money, we've transferred by my count roughly two, two and a half million out of it on a recurring basis to fund operating. We've used about 2 million on a one time basis to cover some operating expenses. And we went to this eight and a half cent model and, you know, it was clearly stated that this purpose is to build up capacity to incur debt and we wouldn't have to go to the residents and ask for tax increases. Now, as soon as we paid off $3 million worth of principal, we want to go immediately and borrow money. And I think it would be better if we let this fund build up and do some longer range planning on how we're going to use this this money. So I guess in summary, what I would sort of leave with is kind of like three questions. Why do we wait so late in the process to even start talking about doing this two thirds bond? I know we're saying, well, you know, we were going to sell 30 million and we're still just going to sell 30 because, you know, we're just supplementing. But this is increasing the burden on the this debt fund because now, rather than having 17 million of the $69 million bond left, we're going to have 19 million that will have to factor into our debt model. So it's really, it's still increasing the burden on the debt model, the debt fund.
Thank you. We're running a little bit over.
That's okay. I'm about through. Not that it's a camera, but I'm about through. So like I said, the timing of why we're doing this so rushed. And then the second thing is, what other projects were considered for use of this money? You know, why did we go directly to let's do parks and streets or to any other high priority projects considered? And the last thing I would say is, I would like if we could tell the residents, what is the long term plan for this revenue savings plan, this debt model for this money? Because the intent was to build it up so that we could do some projects in the town without having to do tax increases. And we keep sort of nickel and dime it here and there. I think there are some high priority projects in this town that this money could be used for, that would return, have a greater return to the residents. And it would like, I would like to see us have a discussion on that. And I'll leave you with last thing. Sometime back, there was a project in the town before the council and there was a lot of residents here and they were opposing it. And one of the comments that were made during that meeting was, just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should do it. And I think that kind of applies here, just because we can issue two third bonds, doesn't mean we should. So I know I ran over, but I think it's very important to be thinking about it long term because I know we talked about possibly doing this in 2027. Thank you.
Thank you. It is very important, you bring out some important points. I'm going to ask Mr. Harmon to come back to the podium over here and help us address some of these very legitimate concerns. And I might start by giving my simple minded impression of what this is, as I've tried to understand it over the past few weeks. It's kind of like if you have a home equity line on your home, that's a good way to borrow money at a good effective rate, if you have a home equity line and you have extra money. And just because you had an opportunity to raise your home equity limit from 100,000 to 120,000 because your house has gotten more valued, doesn't mean you have to start using that money. You don't have to draw that money out. That money is there in case you need it later for the things that you were putting money aside for. Is that a good analogy here?
Yeah, I believe so because it is supplementing this current bond sale. So this current bond sale, the amount is not changing at all. It just gives us that 1.93 million leeway for the future bond sale if something comes up, if there's increase in prices, you know, if council deems it need to be used then.
Yes, and these funds are pretty specifically part of the parks and transportation bond that had to do with parks and sidewalks. This is an extension of those bonds that the people have already voted on.
Correct. Right, for part of the general obligation bonds that were already being used for streets and parks. And so really all it is, is taking, you know, sort of from one pot and put it in the other, but it's really the same amount of money for the same purpose.
Yeah, things that the public has already voted on that they want to see, we're not going to use this to buy the mayor an airplane or something like that. As much as I keep asking for one, I just don't get it. But there are limits to this and this money, we're not selling these bonds, we're not issuing these bonds, we're setting up the limit where we can use this credit line.
So these bonds will be sold in the current, in the coming up March sale.
Okay.
As part of the regular GO bond sale. So that one is being reduced by the 1.9 and then we're selling these two thirds in conjunction with it.
Got you. And use these for the projects we've already built into the long term plan and make decisions.
Yes, sir. And then, so then that 1.9 in the future bond sale could, is still there available to be used if deemed necessary.
I got you, a little swap.
Right.
But wise use of our money, getting the best interest rates for things we've already said we want to do.
Yes, sir.
When the time comes.
And Mayor, if I may add just a, another few comments regarding this as a financial strategy, it's another tool that the town has decided to to move forward with in terms of how we manage the costs for some of our capital projects that were approved through the 2021 bond. We know that the the cost of those projects has escalated and we've been working very hard to look for grants and other opportunities to help with some of the costs, but this provides an opportunity, essentially another tool for us to be able to make sure we've got enough funding available to finish up the projects that we've already started, but also potentially start some of the other projects where we weren't sure we were going to be able to start in terms of the cost of those projects have escalated so much since 2021. So the opportunity presented itself from our financial advisors at Davenport as an opportunity, as a tool, that the the town could take advantage of this year and potentially in 2027 as we look at our capital costs and essentially how do we maintain the capacity of our GO bonds at the lowest interest rate possible.
Exactly, good explanation. With that being said, I'll ask council members if they have other questions for the people who have spoken here. Mr. Matthews?
No, sir.
Mr. Singleton?
Something important remembers that when we started the last referendum, which was voted on in 21, it was all started, the numbers were all assembled before COVID. And one of the best examples is station number five, which we partnered with in Wake County. Our original, when we started this in 18, 17 or 18, it was going to be 3 and 1/2 million dollars. We went from 3 and 1/2 to 4 to 4.2 to 4.5 to 5 to 6. And I remember specifically talking with Mr. Hodges because we were talking about numbers. I said, it sounds like they need to add 10% more to the 6 million. It was 6.6, it was 6.5. That's what got passed by the voters. Got to be cost seven, 7.2, 7.8, 8.1. We spent at least, committed at least eight and a half million dollars because cost escalation, inflation, et cetera, et cetera. After COVID, the project that we started at 3 and 1/2 and we got approved at 6 and 1/2 cost us 8 and 1/2 plus million dollars. And that's what we're seeing with Jones Sausage Road, what we're seeing with Jürgen, what we've seen with sidewalk projects and so forth and so on. So the, and it's in the triangle, it's why the cost of housing has gone up so much because one's demand, but two is the market is driving it that way. So I understand which is why we're concerned, but the money is going to be used for the same projects that it was voted on, we can't use it on something else. So that's just the inflation of that. I mean, we can look, Jones Sausage Road started with our participation being four or five million dollars, it's going to be a whole lot more than that and we're not going to complete the project as it was initially introduced back in the bond referendum because of cost escalation. So, you know, inflation, cost escalation. So uh, you know, inflation, cost escalation, supply and supplies uh increases. It's just created an environment, which is great because it drives it to value your property, but it drives it, the everything associated with the value of the property, your taxes, your insurance free property, et cetera, et cetera. So there's pluses and minuses to it and it drives up the cost of projects. But the session five is an easy one to do because the numbers are so easy to remember uh how much more it costs. So that that's part of what this is. Like I mentioned before, this is almost like a contingency to try to use, but you're selling the single amount of bonds. But you're taking the one point nine out of that, but you're taking and you're just shifting this line of credit down to be used in the future, in the future.
Yes, sir.
So I understand that. Uh, so I had no trouble with it. But uh, the cost escalation on projects is just uh, if staff knows, not the town of Garner, City of Raleigh, Cary, Holly Springs, DOT, whatever agency we want to talk about. So that that's driving a lot of it.
Good observations. Thank you very much. Ms. Behringer?
No comment.
Mr. Dellinger?
Um, just a couple of short comments. I remember the conversation on fire station one. You know, I kept pushing for two or three more million dollars for that project because I knew it was going to cost more.
You mean fire station number five?
Five, number five. I kept pushing for more, but I think that feeds into sort of the conversational long term planning and planning for these types of escalations. The one question on, it should be fairly easy to answer either from from staff. For earmark, what is this? What specifically is this earmarked for? And why was it chosen?
So uh, Mr. Dellinger, the the reason those particular two projects were chosen were just the escalating costs we were seeing within those project line items. So as as council's aware, the Jurgen project has escalated exponentially. Uh, we're also hoping to be able to to do some work and bring Meadowbrook Park on within a certain period of time as well. And so when we looked at timing and we looked at resources, opportunity, uh, that's why the Parks and Recreation area was chosen as well as the sidewalks and streets as well. We've got enough pent up demand and opportunity for projects that those were the areas where we were seeing continued escalating costs that we we knew we'd be able to spend those dollars if needed.
So that goes into the long term planning piece and then the other on the streets and sidewalks. This feeds into a conversation we'll have at the retreat over cost of services. Because there are some assumptions that on the cost of services, our our current need is being met by our current level of delivery on streets and sidewalks. That biases your model towards where this is how, what we need to do. Well, the reality is, I think Mr. Singleton twice said, three or four years ago, we could, we'll be paving every day forever at this rate. We'll never catch up. We'll always have problems. So it goes into that sort of, that model of do we have, are we generating enough revenue to deliver the service at the scale and capacity we need? And I think the underlying assumption is we are. And I don't know that that's necessarily true and that matters when we start talking about cost of services. The other question I had was he, Mr. Whaley mentioned a thirty day clock on a petition. What was the timeline on that?
So um, as in your agenda packet, in the orders, the orders will take effect if it, if you adopt them this evening. Will take effect thirty days after publication. So they have to be published in the newspaper. Um, and that will be once the clerk can prepare the orders and the resolution that has to go along with it and then it gets published. So that starts the thirty day clock at that point.
That's okay. That was my, that was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Vance, comments, questions?
I would just like to say that I um I'm in line with what Mr. Councilman Singleton said about the escalating costs. Uh, having some understanding of uh the projects within not only Garner but in other areas around the, around, around the particularly Wake County and Raleigh, there's, it's not unusual to see the cost of projects escalating tremendously. And to make adjustments within uh our, the way we fund the projects is uh, I think is the reasonable way, way to go. Uh, because they are just uh, the cost, even our projects, as I mentioned, not to repeat, that they are going up because going up considerably as well throughout the town.
Thank you. That's a lot of good input. Uh, I think at this point, we can close the public hearing and see if there's a motion and see if we need to have more discussion. So uh, I'll I'll close the public hearing. I'll ask the council members, is is there a motion to adopt bond order uh authorizing this extension?
So moved. Second?
Okay, uh movement by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Singleton. And just for clarity on a very important issue like this, let's take a roll call vote and let's start with Mr. Matthews then. Uh, all all in favor of adopting this bond order, please signify by saying aye. That would be uh, Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Thank you. Hearing five, that's unanimous. Uh.
Mr. Mayor, if we could just clarify, there are actually two bond orders, one for the streets and sidewalks and one for the parks. So.
Yes.
Just to clarify that council, I want to make sure everyone understood you were voting for both of those.
The bond order authorizing the one million for street and sidewalk improvement bonds and nine hundred and thirty five thousand for parks and recreational combined into one motion. Is that, was that clear? Yeah, I, yeah. I think, I think that was clear, more more clear to them than I articulated. Thank you very much for keeping us on the on path there. Thank you. So let's move along to uh item I, which is new. Thank you very much, Mr. Ollman.
Thank you.
Uh, let's move to a new and old business. This is a tier one conditional rezoning request related to Jurgen Park. And our presenter uh is from the planning department here, Mr. Thomas Walters Dorff. Please, what can you tell us about this project?
Yes. Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, tonight I'll be presenting the uh general, I'm sorry, conditional zoning case for um CZ two four zero zero four Jurgen Park. Um, the applicant is McAdams on behalf of the town of Garner. This is a tier one conditional request um to rezone seventy two plus or minus acres from R four and RA to commercial mixed use conditional. The site is on East Garner Road um between Village at Garner Station and um and Avenue's at White Oak. Again, this is a tier one rezoning request. It does not have a site specific master plan. Although all of you have seen the park master plan, it is not included as part of the rezoning. Again, this is a rural agricultural and residential for um low density residential and ag and nature. Um, currently the property is vacant. It's home to the Jurgen Homestead and the Dupree House. There's also an existing pecan grove. Um, it's on the north side of East Garner Road between Village at Garner Station, Avenue's of White Oak. And it also falls within our CHO um district, the Commercial Highway Overlay. For framework, it's within two of our activity centers, majority of the site on is in the portion of the community activity center centered on East Garner Road um near downtown. The northern portion of the site is at the edge of the Regional Employment Center um kind of centered on Joan Sausage Road. The park uh primarily gravitates towards the Community Activity Center. It's going to be a community amenity adjacent to residential properties. Um, additionally, there is that Neighborhood Activity Center centered on downtown on Main Street. The applicant has proposed seventeen um conditions in CMX out of a possible sixty two. You can see those on your screen. There are also two written conditions, one of them, uh, number two deals with the lighting. Lighting for outdoor athletic and recreational uses shall not exceed ninety feet in mounting height, including base or mounting structure and shall be extinguished no later than eleven PM on regular operating days and no later than twelve midnight on special tournament days. That addresses UDO language on lighting. And additionally, there's going to be an emergency use exit um that will connect with the stub at Eagle Rare Lane in Villages at White Oak and it will be gated for emergency vehicle access only. Uh, staff used the twenty twenty three Garner Forward Comp Plan as our um guidance here for review and observation. In the majority of the park is going to be, or the majority of the site is still going to maintain an open space. That's uh park like in typology. Uh, the commercial uses are designed to be secondary as part of this rezoning. Um, that's why there's narrowed uses. Uh, without a master plan, we can't evaluate all metrics, but there are some site layouts that we've seen to show possible design of the site. There were two hundred seventy properties and occupants within the notification radius. Um, that neighborhood meeting was held June twenty sixth, twenty twenty four at the Garner Rec Center. There were six people in attendance. The full uh neighborhood meeting packet is in your staff report. There were fifteen growth framework that we were able to evaluate. Uh, twelve were strongly consistent. One modestly inconsistent and two strongly inconsistent. The uh CMX zoning choice was one of the negative ratings because that's not consistent with open space typology. Um, however, a small portion of the site uh through deed restriction is designed to be commercial. The applicant will speak to that later. Uh, also the neighborhood commercial building type received a negative rating. Overall, we found it was uh quite strong in its consistency. Uh, we do recognize that zoning a park commercial makes you seems counterintuitive. But this was designed to allow flexibility and economic development. And this park is designed to serve as a destination for those nearby and throughout the area. Uh, this rezoning was evaluated at Planning Commission at their meeting January thirteenth. Questions and comments uh from the Planning Commission consisted of the neighborhood meeting packet and materials. Question over phasing of the park, the size of replacement trees to be planted. There were comments on food truck connections, water and electricity. Um, questions over the site of drive access on East Garner Road. There were a couple of comments on SEMs, including public art, educational signage, uh questions over security and cameras. If there was a traffic signal warranted, questions over how synthetic turf fields are counted towards SEM sizing and and impervious surfaces and question over the pecan trees and how they'd be preserved. Planning Commission adopted uh this consistency statement. They also moved um a motion to recommend approval um by Mr. Carson, seconded by Commission Member Boyland, and it passed unanimously. Tonight, your task will be to evaluate the case based on reasonableness pictured there and in your staff report. Uh, starting on page forty in your agenda packet, um you will find the draft motions tonight. Uh, staff analysis finds it to be consistent and reasonable and would um ask for approval. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Team is here tonight on behalf of the town as the applicant. They have a brief presentation they can show and myself and them can answer any questions as well.
Yes, wonderful presentation, Mr. Walters Dorff. And yes, we certainly would like to hear from the applicant, who is one of our own. Uh, Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Munoz Blanco.
Before I start the presentation, I wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to introduce council to our new uh Parks and Greenways Planning Manager. It's a new position for our town uh and you uh approved it uh for this fiscal year. So Matt Beard is with us tonight. Uh, he's a um. He brings a lot of expertise to our department. Uh, also with us tonight, it's Project Manager for uh for the project from Engineering, Lisa Rodriguez, who has been doing a lot of the heavy lifting uh associated with this project. So uh, great team and uh if you have driven past uh Jurgen um Park, you have noticed that there's a little bit of of activity going on, so we're very excited about that. Uh, you've seen most of this presentation when we came to you um sometime in December. So I'm not going to go through every single slide, but we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Uh, but the main impetus for us to bring uh a rezoning request is that the property has two uh zonings, um agricultural and residential. And as you know, when you have two different types of of zonings, you do have to to buffer in between. Uh, and that would not be particularly practical uh for this park uh the way it's been designed. And um, I know it's unusual to pursue commercial mixed use for a park, as Thomas has mentioned. Um, but we do have some uh considerations for this and it's specific to um the area of the homestead. The property is restricted by deed to be used for a public park, but it excludes the five acres surrounding the homestead. Um, and the text that you see on the, on the screen is actually a little screen cap from the uh deed. And it is to provide the town with the opportunity to repurpose or do some adaptive use of the, of the homestead uh in sort of inconsistent with economic development goals for the town. So considering the potential uses for the homestead, I think CMX provides us with a maximum flexibility of uses that would still be compatible with the park and that will be supporting uh downtown development. Uh, CMX also is the Parks Director. I should tell you that uh the buffers are the widest. Uh, so that certainly supports tree conservation and and uh being a good neighbor to the residential um neighborhood uh that will be surrounding the park. So the following uses, you've seen this chart before. Again, we really try to be uh thoughtful in uh restricting from sixty two to seventeen uh to the ones that we felt were really more uh would really sort of serve to to the economic development uh potential for the homestead adaptive use, but also make sure that they were very compatible uh with a recreational park. And then we do have a practical uh need for uh sports lighting is rather tall. Uh, and we just wanted to make sure that that is included in the conditions. Uh, and also we do need a secondary emergency exit uh and that connects to Eagle Rare Lane. And that particular neighborhood was um ca- concerned that this would not be a a cut through to the park, but that it would be gated so that it's only for emergency vehicle access. And we have some of those emergency vehicle access elsewhere in the town, so there's something that has proven to be a workable solution. You've seen this so many times, uh, but um, you know, here's a site plan uh of of Jurgen Park. Uh, the master plan that the town council adopted in May of twenty twenty one. Um, and again, sort of a a focus on what is phase one, the natural turf field, we'll have two of those. Uh, those are the ones that are closest to Garner Road. Uh, then we have two artificial turf fields. Uh, those are a little bit sort of further down. Uh, and in between them, we'll have the picnic shelter uh as well as a lovely playground area, plentiful parking. Um, and you know, lots of of uh opportunities for this park to be a fantastic place for our community. Uh, and that is, that's it. Well, uh, our team will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Excellent. Well, while you're there, let's uh call on council members who might have some questions related to this and let's start with Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've just got only one. I'm I'm excited about this project. It's going to be great. Uh, and I think I brought this up one time before. As you face it, there was a little white building, it used to be a hospital, I think. And we talked about what we was going to do with it before we get too much into here. Are we planning on moving that up here where the homestead is? And there was some talk about trying to move it over where the depot is. Uh, where are we at on that? Because while at this point here, before we start doing a lot of paving, I guess, and what have you, probably is the opportune time to do something with that.
So the Dupree House is uh remaining on site. Uh, that's the the sort of official name of the little white house that was uh used as a hospital site during the war. Um, we have funding in our current fiscal year CIP to do an assessment of that little house as well as the homestead to figure out the sort of order of magnitude cost for rehabilitation. Uh, but we're not taking it down. We're sort of mothballing it for now. Um, I think because of of historic preservation, section one oh six restrictions, moving it, it's not necessarily the most desirable outcome for it, but preserving it in place. Um, and we do think, you know, if if money was not an object, um refurbishing it as a sort of welcome center for the park uh would be an amazing idea. It's just, you know, cost, we still don't know what it would be. But long term, I think the house is in fairly solid condition. Our public work team sort of patrols it periodically to make sure that it's still, you know, dry. As long as you keep an old house dry, uh, it's sort of, you know, they're they're built really strong, so. Um, so that's the long term plan, but short term, we'll be doing an assessment to make sure that we have a better understanding um of cost of adaptive use.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton, questions?
I'm glad it's moving through. We're about ten years in, so it's glad to see it moving along. On that house, I believe, as I was told, and I may be incorrect here, that house used to be where the house is now. Because the house, the old, the big farm house was built in the early twenties, I believe. And that was relocated out. And of course, the inside of the uh old hospital. And of course, the inside of the old hospital does not look like a house that was built a hundred and fifty years ago. It was remodeled completely.
Yeah, I think that house, we've been inside, and it looks like it had a renovation of sorts sometimes in the seventies. That's what it looks like to me. But we do have a historic resources study that was done as part of the early master planning process, and it does sort of note that the house was moved. The Dupree House, that was the original homestead for the Jürgen Farm. Whenever they build the bigger homestead, it was moved to that side and kind of repurposed for a tenant, I believe, so.
And there's interconnectivity, of course, within the park with walking trails. And but there'll be the ten-foot-wide path along East Garner Road that will go all the way down to the intersection with New Grand Road.
That is correct. As part of the project, we have to do some improvements to Jürgen Road to meet the ultimate section, and it will have the multi-use path along the frontage of the park.
Oh, east to Garner Road, you say Jürgen Road. But you're saying Jürgen Road and Garner, so you're not just spiking, you didn't just make it up. Yeah, it's just a little further down the road. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Behrger.
Yeah, I'm excited. We have wished and hoped and wished and hoped for such a long time, and to see it actually happening, I pass that way nearly every day. And more work being done. Just a wonderful project to come to Garner and to preserve something that was already part of our heritage from now on. I had the opportunity to go inside the house about four years ago, and I was just amazed at what good condition it was in to be as old as it was and not occupied. So thank you for all your work to make this a reality.
Excellent. Mr. Dallinger?
Yes, I need a memory refresher on the connections between the park and the village at Garner Station.
Okay, refresher. So on the frontage of the park, the multi-use path will connect to the entrance of the village at Garner Station, where the paths continue sort of pretty much all the way towards Creech Road. So it is a pretty sort of, it'll be a really nice walking amenity also for the downtown area. We also have on the plan, you might not notice it in this picture. Let me see if it's better in the previous one. At the very top, sort of next to the SEM, that's by the letter F, there is a pedestrian connection envisioned that will connect to the village, where they have their mail area, mail kiosk area.
I mean, road connections.
Oh, road connections?
Yeah, stubs on the village of Garner Station to this project. What is there, what's not? I bring it up because there's the Condition Three for this Eagle Rare Lane as an emergency only. And so it makes the question, what other road connections are there to the property? And how will it interconnect and or not? And will those be restricted to emergency only? And I know we have, the village project was approved on the west and to the north of this. And I see a road up in here, but I don't know where it goes, and I don't know what the connection is. And I know council was very concerned about the flow of traffic through this property. So I don't know if planning needs to get up and explain where we are on villages. North Garner, I always have a brain lock on the name of that project because it was North Garner Station forever. What are the road connections between this project and the other parcels and projects around it?
I can, as a clarification, the stub that you see in the master plan is no longer. I think in the development, and I'm gonna have planning correct me if I'm totally wrong, but the initial approach to make the internal park driveway a collector was sort of canceled by the council many years ago, several years ago since I've been here, so three, four years ago. And I believe the internal roadway of the village at Garner Station will run parallel to the property line as it goes to the very top.
Yeah, but then it hangs right to the north part of the property. And there's about seventy-five-plus homes back in there.
Yes.
And so I don't remember, and before I vote on this, I want to remember what that road connection was between that village project and here, and whether it was free-flowing, or whether it was an emergency only, or there was something put in to maybe only be emergency only. Because I see the far right, which is the north part of the, there's a stub that goes right up to the property line. And if that doesn't exist anymore, and there not going to be any road connections to that, but I want to know what the North Village, have they submitted a site plan yet?
Yeah.
So what, can we see their site plan?
I mean, I can probably better explain it to you real quick. So yes, this connection does not exist. So this has disappeared out of the park master plan and is not in their plan. What you... I have to flip the microphone up. What you do have is there is a minor collector that comes through this area in parallels. So what you're seeing in the master plan here, they're actually building a minor collector on their side that will parallel and be butted right up against the property line. So the park will be able to make a connection there. If it is a private kind of drive situation like we're doing with Eagle Rare, that could be gated as well.
You say could be gated or is going to be gated?
It could be. I mean, that's not my decision to make. That's y'all.
So that's why I want to see the North Village, this connector that is not represented on this master plan, that's not part of this rezoning. I want to see the site plan for the villages of North Garner Station, or whatever it's called, to see where this potential connection is, and whether we need to make a decision tonight to make that an emergency-only connection. I don't want it to magically appear in five years as a connection between these two, and that's not our intention. If it's our intention, that's one thing. But I don't want to be surprised when we've got free-flowing, cut-through traffic going through the backside of the park.
I don't appear to have access.
Is it on the development map? Is there a version?
Jeff, there is a drawing on the development map. I'm not sure if it's the most current, but I think it will answer your question.
Yeah, we are.
It will load, Jeff. It takes just a moment.
There we go. Let it resolve. Hopefully, there we go. So yeah, the park boundary is right here. So this stretch of roadway on Street C will be parallel to there, providing the park with an opportunity to make a connection anywhere along that stretch.
Then why, I don't see that on their site plan. So why would we, why, where is this plan for this connection when I don't see it on their site plan either?
So there's no actual, like, a ninety-degree turn for any connection because the right-of-way is coterminous with the property line. So that entire stretch from here to here will be frontage that is public right-of-way. And so the park plan can connect in there at any point that it wants to, whatever works best.
I think, Mr. Dallinger, if the town desires, based on the outcome of Phase Two of the project, that the town's best interest to have a connection, it's set up so it could be made. There is nothing needed by village at Garner Station to connect over to the park. Does that help at all?
Yes.
There's no, there's no right-of-way needed or anything?
No. But if, depending on what the council, the town decides to do with Phase Two, should there be a desire or need for another connection, there's an opportunity for the town to choose to connect it to the village, but the village's approval does not require any connection to the park.
Correct.
If I may, checking the development agreement between the town and the developer of what's now the village at Garner Station, the developer shall construct the local street on the property to the eastern right-of-way adjacent to the town lot line, which is called Jürgen Park, to allow future cross-access connections between the property and Jürgen Park. The location of the connection shall be subject to town approval with respect to avoiding or minimizing impacts to the existing Jürgen House and Pecan Grove. So... And then it says, in addition, should developers' project need a fire apparatus access road which crosses the Jürgen Park property, the developer would be responsible for all costs associated with the access road or connection, including but not limited to stormwater, street lighting, and security gating. So it leaves open the option to gate that rather than having it a through street.
So that applies to what you read, apply to both this A Street and the C Street? It sounds like it applies to the A Street since you was mentioning the pecan. I don't think that that, that doesn't innately reference the C-section of road, does it? Because if it's referencing the pecans, that's not the stretch of road that's up here. And so now I'm having questions about why we're letting the developer build into what is probably some kind of setback they were supposed to have had.
I believe the way it's written, because it says construct a local street on the property with its eastern right-of-way adjacent to the common lot line, it encompasses both of those streets and potential connections.
Okay.
I do remember we had some discussion on that, Mr. Dallinger. And I think we just never thought that connection would happen. But if something was developed, and you don't mess with the trees, and it would run in front of the trees or behind the trees, something. I know, I remember that being discussed at one time, but I don't think it was something that we all decided that that was favorable because of interference with the house and the tree.
What I remember, and I could be wrong, tell me if I'm wrong, the connection was in this little cluster up here on the north part of the property. There was some kind of stub road that came down from there, no? It was always a parallel against the property line?
If you may recall, there were iterations where they wanted to build the road on the town property, and then, you know, so there was a lot of discussion about where the location of that road to the north would go.
Yeah, maybe at one point, we were seeing it here.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm remembering.
That was when they were thinking that the road was going to go through the park. But ever since that decision was made not to have the collector through the park, it's been moved off.
So it asks, but do we need to specify in this rezoning that the connection that's going to be made will be emergency only? Because if we decided we didn't want a road going through before, I guess another council could see it differently. But I don't think anyone's opposed to the emergency connections. But it's, do we want to make that a condition of the rezoning? And if another council wants to come back and change it, change it. But I don't want to end up in a situation where we have a surprise road connection that wasn't really intended. Anybody else?
I mean, this, any connection would be subject to future town approval, so I don't know that you have to make a decision tonight in conjunction with this rezoning.
But one question of that, where it parallels the town property, again, I mean, there's got to be some space between the town property and the street. You're not gonna put the curb and gutter on the property line. So that's why I asked my right-of-way. If that's some of their property, do we, we need to have access to it? Because there's not, the curb and gutter or the sidewalk, whatever's on there, is not gonna be touching our property line. And there could be some other property in between?
So the curb won't, or the sidewalk won't. There'll be, what, Leah, maybe two and a half, three, five feet at most? But the right-of-way will actually be coterminous. So there's no private property in between.
All right, I've heard you say coterminous twice. How about filling us in on a layman term? I think I know what you mean, but tell us what coterminous means.
Sure, so the property line and then the right-of-way are right on top of each other. They're one and the same. Sorry.
Put that down in my quote for today, coterminous. Serious.
And I clarify, the provision that I read refers to the local street, which is Street C. Street A is the collector road. It goes out to Creech. So Street C is the local street. So, so in the development agreement, the town is obligated to provide temporary construction easements on Jürgen Park, but not provide right-of-way for that street. So they will have to keep the street on their side of the property line.
What I think I was also hearing from staff is that Street C will be built by the developer of the village at Garner Station, but they will become city-town streets. And the town of Garner will own the right-of-way right up to the property line. And if we choose to put a cut-in to the park, if the town chooses to put a cut-in, we'll do it on our right-of-way, our street, through our sidewalk, to our park. Okay. Is that satisfying you, Mr. Dallinger? Does that address your concern?
Not really, but I mean, I understand. So it is what it is. I mean, I think if we were to put our stamp on what we wanted and didn't want as far as traffic flow through the project, we'd make it a condition of the zoning right now. And if somebody in the future didn't like that, they could undo it. To sit up here in four or five years and decide we don't want it anymore, then who knows, you know, who knows what's gonna be going on? So... Yeah, I'm just afraid of having a connector road to that backside of the park beyond the emergency services like we've sort of always been in favor of. So that would, that's my feedback. And I like the pedestrian connections. Add pedestrian connections all day long, let them walk over. But if you're gonna get people cutting through to try to get over and come out further down, again, we were trying to reduce the flow of traffic through the park for safety reasons. That was the whole reason when it first came to us, it was a major collector. We're like, you're not having a major collector through the town park? If traffic volume and safety is the, is the concern, still is, you can mitigate against that. Now, that's how I feel.
My only, yeah, my only advice is if you do want to add something like that as a condition, you may not want to use emergency access just because there may be certain things, once the park is built out, that if the park has events, you may, you may decide that you want to use it as a...
Gated flow.
Yeah.
For events, yeah.
So gated, but not necessarily just for emergency.
So on Condition Three, it specifies the stub at Eagle Rare Lane and the emergency access. So what you're saying is, we want to consider having a municipal access, I don't know how you want to call, whatever you want to call it, for the town to use or whoever. Can you put that in a condition? Is that what you're thinking, Mr. Dallinger?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if municipal access is the right terminology, it's probably not, but anyway. That means if public works needed to use, had to cut through to do something, public works can use, and then on emergency access.
Hey, yeah, good evening, sorry. So I would, I would, just from the park planning perspective, caution against restricting your use of your park site any further than you have to. You know, obviously, the connection... You know, obviously, the connection at Eagle Rare was something that was kind of conceded on our behalf to satisfy neighbors' concerns. None of those concerns have been raised by the developer of this property on that side. We would be happy to consider that in the future. However, because this grants us another access to a public right-of-way, right now we would have the ability to amenitize a portion of the park that may not be accessible from our current location. Now, I'm not saying that we need to put another heavy-use amenity right next to this neighborhood and access it through neighborhood streets, that's not ideal. But if you were to do kind of a passive amenity back there with a small parking lot that was then connected through the park with a emergency access only, then you would still be needing to access from Street C via a full public, you know, parking lot versus have it just as an emergency access.
Yeah, in Phase Two, there's a significant, excuse me, field, ball field, and there are park space back there in large parking lots. So I'm, I'm seeing the need for the potential flow for high volume. And I see some of the benefits too of coming in off of A and looping around and coming through. But I want to just make sure whatever we decide, we're clear on what we're getting and that, and that the developer, they wanted something totally different, I'll tell you. We spent a year hacking with them. I just want to make sure it doesn't become a problematic cut-through. But again, I, I'm just bringing it up for discussion and, um, if it, I think the limitation of a municipal cut-through makes sense and if, but built or constructed in such a way that if it wanted to be a connector, um, and then the town decides in the future, don't want to do that anymore, and it's inconvenient, and they need the free flow, I think it's easier to take a restriction away than to put a restriction in place when it comes to the traffic. People get used to a flow and start putting up gates, they get mad and all that kind of stuff, so.
I, I just want to be clear that we, in the development agreement, the town is contractually obligated to provide the connection if the developer of the village at Garner Station needs a fire apparatus access road. They would, if they had to have a connection, they would have to build that road, and it, it could be gated.
What determines if they have to have that?
It would have to do with the number of units they have without a secondary fire access.
Which at this time, they do not. They have met their requirements on site.
I was trying to count, they look close.
Well, the thing that gives me some comfort level on this is that the park is being built by, will be controlled by, owned by, Town of Garner. And the Street C is also owned by, controlled by, Town of Garner. And only we can decide to put in a, a connection if we want one, and what kind and under what condition. So given that, I, I trust y'all to make good decisions. I, I don't think we need further restriction at this point.
I'm treating them like another applicant. If this were any other developer.
Yeah.
This is what I would do.
Yes.
And I, I don't know who's going to be sitting up here in five, six, 10 years when Phase Two gets built. That, that's just, how am I, you're just another applicant, so.
Yeah, if we're any other applicant, I'd be with you 100%. I, I trust the current staff, I trust the future staff, I trust the current council, and to some degree, I, I respect the future ones too, I respect the best. I think we have, my opinion, we, we have controls in place. And tell staff, my attorney, assistant town manager, anybody tells me different. But what, those are good points, if anybody else would do it. That being said, what other questions do we have before we ask, ask for a motion here? Any other questions? It's not a public hearing, we're not taking testimony, we're just having a discussion between council members before we ask for a motion. Hearing done, I, I will accept a motion to accept our, our previous decision and the Planning Commission's recommendation to consider the reasonableness here. And I'll, I'll see, is, is there a motion to approve and adopt ordinance 20255305?
Mayor, I move that the town council accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment requested, request was adopted, land use plans detailed in Section Three of the staff report as our own. And I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number 20255305 approving rezoning CZ 24004 as the request is reasonable in the public interest because the subject property would be suitable for the uses permitted by the proposed district versus the current districts.
Okay, there was a motion by Mr. Vance, second by Ms. Behringer. Now let's, let's go with the voice vote. All in favor of adopting this ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay?
No.
Okay, it was one nay and four ayes. So that, the, the ordinance is adopted, is passed. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
A lot of moving parts. Glad to see the progress. Thank you all. Okay, that concludes the new and old business. We have committee reports, and let's start at Mr. Vance's end. And is there a committee report you're bringing to us tonight?
No committee report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dillinger, committee?
No reports.
Ms. Behringer, committee?
Yes, I, we had a message today from the sculptor who is creating the, the piece to go at Avery Street in Garner Road. And he is being held up by the weather a little bit, but hopefully we'll have the base in by the first of the week and then be ready to place the sculpture shortly thereafter. And then, um, some of the committee members are meeting with Mrs. Colas from, okay, Graphics House, and Parks and Rec with Amy Prision next week to talk about, with the Historic Society, the, what kind of mural we'd want to put on the side of the Pearl Street building, what we'd like it to embody and how we'd like it to look. So we're excited about that. Moving right along, and everybody's been wonderful about offering help to get the job done.
Wow, wait. Art Commission is really going to town.
Moving along.
Fantastic. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Committee report? None. Okay, then let's flip right along to manager reports and Talk of the Town, and I know there is some.
So yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before we, we review the Talk of the Town, your monthly report, I just wanted to follow up on a few items that the mayor mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Due to the winter storm that we're expecting to start tomorrow morning, town buildings and facilities will be closed tomorrow. Employees that are able to work remotely will be working remotely. And our first responders, including our public works team, will be out and about to make sure we're staying safe during this wintry weather. The winter weather is supposed to go until Thursday morning, chance of not only snow but ice and very cold temperatures until Friday afternoon. So we will continue to monitor the weather to determine when it's safe to reopen buildings and facilities, and we'll provide an update to staff and the community tomorrow afternoon in terms of what we're thinking of for Thursday as well. So just wanted to share that with council and, and the community this evening. Because of the wintry weather we're expecting, we did decide to reschedule council's planning retreat that was scheduled for Thursday and Friday. So we'll be looking to find times next week to, to reschedule. So if, if you could check your calendars for Thursday and Friday next week, just to confirm whether you could be available, or if you've got some, some times for us to work around, let us know. We'll also be reaching out to some of our guests we invited to the retreat to see if we can reschedule them as, as well. So more to come on that as we get all the details put together, but just wanted to share that with council. So in addition to the closings tomorrow, we also have our Talk of the Town on our agenda this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hodges to give a brief review of the Talk of the Town. So, Mr. Hodges?
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Council members, tonight, the, one of the topics on Talk of the Town is the Metro 201 Building, our, our public-private partnership with LMG in our downtown district. We've had some recent positive traction on that project with being featured in both Triangle Business Journal and on WPTF Radio. We are at a critical point with that project now in, in working to secure potential tenants for the commercial space. We need to secure some of those tenants so that we can move forward with the developer and working with them on their funding package. So for you or for anyone else listening, if you've got anyone who may be interested in, in being a part of that project, please reach out to Mr. Groover so that we can have a conversation about next steps on that project. Public Works held their bi-annual electronics recycling event in partnership with Wake County on the eighth. They collected 18 pallets of electronics which nearly filled up a tractor trailer. So we want to thank all of the folks in town who took this opportunity for a free service to dispose of electronics in a responsible manner. We had a chilly morning that morning also. On February eighth, the police department had their polar plunge, their second annual event where they raised over $10,000 for Special Olympics. It was a great event and a great turnout from the community. ETJ update, a topic that I was of great importance to our council. The ETJ request did move out of the land use committee of the Wake County Planning Commission. It is going to be on the March agenda for Wake County Planning Commission, and we are hopeful that they may be able to finalize that case at that time and then make a recommendation to the county commissioners. They do, of course, have the discretion to hold it open for any additional information they need. But I believe Mr. Trezenberg, working with county staff, feels like they, they have all the information prepared for the Planning Commission that they have indicated a desire to have, and we're hopeful that it can move out of that meeting to a recommendation to the county commissioners.
I have a question. What kind of, when, when it's approved, what notification, if any, will folks who are being brought into the ETJ get?
Mr. Trezenberg is out of the room. I may have to follow up with you on that, Mr. Dillinger, but there is a, there is a specified period and all the steps that we'll go through. But if it's okay with council, we'll follow up with the, the steps that are required after that council, the commission approval. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we'll do. Rebranding survey, there is a survey out now on the rebranding, and I think Ms. Miller is going to provide some additional information out to council soon on that. But we have had a great turnout, or a great response to the survey. She'll provide some additional information on that. And then lastly, our Citizens Police Academy will begin on March the fourth. That is always a, a well-attended and well-utilized service and opportunity for learning that we have in the community. Also included are your monthly analytics from Garner Info, and you will, you can see the statistics there, what kind of calls that we're getting. A large number of our calls now, since it's the winter months and we don't have grass and other things, are miscellaneous street type of items, the type of things that you would expect to see there. And so if you have any questions about those statistics or anything else in Talk of the Town, please let us know, and Mr. Dillinger will follow up with a timeline and next steps after later.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is that all the talk there is?
That is.
That's a lot of talk. Anything else, Ms. Miller?
That's all for this evening, certainly available to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. And that brings us to attorney reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here to report on the Pearl and Parker Street Improvements Project and give you your final acquisition report. This acquisition involved 10 parcels, five of which were already owned by the town. However, we had to provide utility easements for some of the utility relocation that is occurring in conjunction with both the townhouse project and with the town's contributions to the streets and sidewalk project. So out of the five privately-owned parcels, I was able to negotiate donations from Garner Baseball, Garner Lions Club, the townhome project, and that just left one private property owner at the corner of Montague Street for which we did acquire the right-of-way and easements needed. So I'm happy to report that this came in under budget and that the town's portion of the work can proceed now that all of the, all the necessary acquisition has been completed. Happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Any questions? Sounds like great progress. You say on time and under budget, those are the words we like to hear.
Engineering might not feel that it was on time, but it could have been potentially a little bit faster. But there was some timing where things were redesigned to accommodate Garner Baseball and Garner Lions Club interest. So, so that delayed some of the project, and we didn't want to acquire the easements before we knew exactly what we needed at that point.
Excellent, excellent work. Other questions, comments on that item? Any other attorney reports?
No other reports, thank you.
That's good news, thank you. And we still have time for council reports, we heard committed reports. If there are other items from council, let's start with Mr. Matthews and work back this way.
Nothing this time.
Mr. Singleton?
I apologize for being tardy tonight and dressed for the night's meeting more like the mayor than the rest of the council, but I was due to work.
You said three days' worth of work in one day, so you're excused for the two minutes.
Tried to do that, got close to doing it, not far, yeah.
Good, good work, thank you for being here.
Yes.
Ms. Behringer?
Just one item, sorry, I've been in conversation with the manager about the power pole on Garner Road that was hit a few weeks ago, and that it, it's, I want the folks that are watching us to know that we're, we're not ignoring it, that we're having some issues with getting the repairs done. The weather hasn't helped, but it is being addressed, and before too long, the power pole will be replaced, and nobody will have to be nervous about driving by.
Makes me nervous every time I go by. Thanks for your diligence. Thank you. Mr. Dillinger?
I was going to censure Mr. Singleton for his attire this evening, but since you apologized, I have no further comment.
Thanks for your generosity and patience. Mr. Vance?
I have no report.
Okay. Well, that concludes our regular session, and I think we have some business to do in a closed session. Is that correct?
Yes. It's been requested to have a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11A4 for economic development.
Okay, is there a motion in second to move to a closed session?
So move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Behringer, second by Mr. Singleton. All in favor of moving to a closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Let's move to a closed session, and we'll be back in a little bit. aye. Any opposed by nay. Let's move to a closed session, and we'll be back in a little bit.
Return to the open session and if we could get a summary perhaps from our town attorney of the action, any action taken in the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council met with staff in closed session to discuss economic development opportunities and incentives. No official votes or action was taken.
Thank you very much. It was very productive for us though, I assure you. That being said, I'm going to ask council members for a motion that is second to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Vance, seconded by Mr. Singleton. All in favor of adjournments signify by saying aye. Any opposed by nay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming. Night's work well done.